Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to Oak Island Planning Board Meeting. If we would, please stand and pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any adjustments to the agenda? Very good approval of the minutes. April and May, does anyone have any changes? We good? Make a motion that we accept them as presented.
I'll second.
All in favor? Approved. No public comment. Down to old business, and we are starting at 7.38, convenience stores. Everyone still have their list of...
Can I?
Yes.
Actually, just going back to 7.11, just real quick, I didn't know, Matt, under the first of the 7.11.1 on page 14, I didn't know if it made sense, since we do reference hot tubs, and hot tubs do have particular requirements per CAMA where they can be placed relative to the static vegetation lines, if it would make sense to say pools and hot tubs. And then it says shall meet any requirements. Didn't know if that should say all requirements of CAMA.
I'm sorry, did you point me to the wrong place?
I'm sorry. It's page 14. 7.11, it's that first red line. Do you have the red line?
I don't.
It's in today's agenda.
Okay.
You see what I'm talking about?
Yeah, those are easy.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
And when you say hot tubs not permanently affixed, okay, or exempt from this subsection, hot tubs that are not permanently affixed, I believe they still are subject to CAMA.
Yeah, I can't exempt somebody from CAMA requirements.
Right, 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 right. I just didn't know, when you say this subsection, do you mean 7.11.6?
When we talked about this item previously, there had been some discussion about, you know, hot tubs that aren't permanently affixed, meeting setbacks, other regulations from local zoning standpoint, and the consensus of the board was to say that those aren't treated the same as a pool, so we wanted to add a note to exempt those. When you exempt it from the subsection, it would be exempt from 7.11 from those requirements, since it's not a permanent structure at that point, if it's not permanently affixed. But no, this wouldn't exempt anything from CAMA. I can't locally exempt somebody from a CAMA regulation.
Okay.
That's a state regulation.
So, Mr. Gilbert, is it your point to maybe make an additional there, that it's not exempt from any CAMA?
Yeah, shall be exempt from this subsection, but still shall apply. To me, I was hoping that just adding the hot tubs, whether they're permanent or non-permanent, that would actually deal with hot tubs and CAMA there, because there are...
That's an easy edit we can make, yes, sir.
Okay. So then maybe the clarification under 7.11.6, that they're exempt from the, except for CAMA regulations, or something like that.
Absolutely.
Okay. Sorry about that, guys.
That's the point.
Just flipping through to see if I had any other comments on the red line.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, do you want to just have each one of us go through the whole thing? Okay.
I can stop if there's someone else who...
Go ahead. Or we can take each section.
Yeah.
And comments from each one? Is that how you want to?
How do you want to do it? I'll go ahead.
Go ahead, and you can go ahead and start.
Okay, so 7 on page 25, 7.35.1. I wanted to just understand the reserved.
It just keeps us from renumbering the section, so if there's a regulation...
Oh, 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 got it. So you're just, while you admit it, you're just going to reserve, got it. Okay, thank you, sir. All right, and that may have been everything that I had.
I wanted to go back...
Go ahead.
To 7.11.1, just something I noticed and wanted clarification on. This isn't in the red highlight, but the sentence before that swimming pools are not allowed in the required front yard area. They are, aren't they? Now...
I mean, the black text is the current regulation, is what I would say.
Is that, is that not in effect anymore? Matt?
Not, it hasn't changed to my knowledge, no, sir. If it's in the text, it's in effect. The black is the current regulations.
Remind us again how a home designates which side of the house is the front yard?
Apologies. The yard designation is different than the property line designation, so you have a front yard, side yard, rear yard, that are set up based on the, they're set up based on the property address versus, as we discussed at length during this item specifically, versus on a through lot where you have two, you have two front property lines, but you still have a front and a rear yard based on the orientation of the house and the addressing. So it is a bit confusing, and something staff's tried to clarify with town council a couple of times at this point. The regulations remain in effect as they are.
So a beachfront home is the front yard, the oceanfront side, or the street side, beach drive side?
I believe the front yard on an oceanfront home is the street side, but I'd have to do some more research into that.
So now going to second row, the homeowner can then determine, because there are several homes where the pool has been built on the beach side of a second row home. So in that case, has that homeowner designated Dolphin as their mailing address?
It could be that, or it could be that the pool is not actually accessory, that it's integrated into the home structurally.
So if it's on a deck?
But if it's structurally attached, if it's all one structure, including the deck, the house, everything, that's one piece. Versus a pool as an accessory, that's a detached piece. Depend on the construction of the actual structure itself.
So then if it's a detached deck...
If it's a detached deck, then it would be considered an accessory structure, yes, sir.
An accessory structure. And in that case, can the homeowner determine if they want to have Dolphin as their mailing address, they can then put it on the beach drive side of?
Well, the homeowner can't necessarily determine their mailing address. Those are set internally by the town and by the construction of the home. So like, if you have an existing home, you couldn't just say, oh, well, I'm going to be addressed off of this side now, and that's going to be, you don't really get that choice option unless you're actually constructing a new build at that point.
Okay.
I'd have to do some more research into that. I apologize. I'm not the most well-versed on the home side of it.
This one is a little technical, because you would think, I mean, there are homes on the second row that have built as add-on properties, I'm almost positive, decks. The question now is, is it an attached deck or a detached deck? If it's a deta, and if the town has designated beach drive as the mailing address for second row, they can put a pool on an attached deck, but they cannot build a detached deck with a pool on that side?
Or have an in-ground pool on the front side.
On the beach side.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, in-ground would be detached. It would be totally accessory.
Yeah, yeah. To me, that's an easy one to tackle. It's the deck itself, whether it's attached or detached, that's determining whether the pool is an accessory structure or not.
Yeah. It needs to be, the way we've looked at it internally, is that it needs to be structurally attached, so it needs to be kind of integral to the structure as a whole in order to qualify for something like that. It can't be, you know, you get into a little bit of a gray area of what's attached, right? You know, is it a board? Is it something like that? The way we've looked at it is, in order for it to, you know, so just as a kind of aside, you know, what if someone wanted an indoor pool, you know, that was on the first floor of their structure, of their, of their single-family home, right? That's a part of the single-family home. That's not an accessory structure. So that's kind of how we have to look at it. Is it a part of that, that total structure versus something that's subordinate to it?
So then, does this conversation lend maybe to a couple of 7.11.1.1, defining or giving a little bit more, do you feel like other places in the ordinance, it's going to all be covered? But to me, I almost feel, and maybe you have, those of you who build, you know, or who have familiarity, to me, putting a deck with a pool on the ocean side, I have a hard time seeing how structurally you could just tie that into the pilings of the house. I would almost feel like by definition, you would want that detached. The whole purpose of a detached deck is so that if it does get pulled due to water, it's not going to impair the structure of the house itself. And when you've got, now granted, you've got a pool and it's probably not going anywhere, but you would still think that that would be a detached deck to structurally support the pool, you know what I mean? And we might have some, some homes that are not, I mean, look, Courtney's as good as gold on this stuff. I can't imagine she'd give a permit that wouldn't be. But here, if someone is reading this, there's probably a little bit more guidance we need to give them related to sitting on this, you know, some of this, I don't know if anyone, and you can just look at that, Matt, and see if there's anything else that we need to provide, but...
I actually had a note that we needed to add text for through lots, which I think is your point, right? To be more specific about what's allowed on through lots.
Okay.
I think, that was my note, Matt. I didn't write down any specific text that was recommended, but that was my note from our discussion.
I'd be happy to add a note to that, and to everyone's point to clarify the through lot situation that we have currently.
I mean, would that, Earl, would that sort of help with what you're trying to get?
I think so. I think so. I think it's the through lot, and I think it's, again, it's this notion of detached versus attached.
I think what we're, what we're ending up at is probably, you know, Mr. Spicer and I had a conversation prior to the meeting about an educational opportunity during permitting to kind of give people the good guidance, so they understand, you know, in kind of layman's terms, what the sum of our rules and regulations amount to.
Okay.
Because you're right, it is, it is a couple of different things. Is this subsection, is an accessory, is it not? Is it CAMA, is it not? Is it flood? You know, kind of what you were getting at.
How are we even defining front and back, and we could reference, if there's a definition in terms of what defines a front yard?
Yeah, absolutely, yes, sir. Good points. Thank you.
Is that it? You're good.
It's done already? I just...
That's right.
Anything else?
Okay, so back to swimming pools. Seems like the topic of the day today, right? To our point about through lots, I had a note also in our prior discussion about front yard fencing not being solid with a four-foot limit. Does anybody recall what that was about? If pools aren't allowed in the front yard, why did I write that down?
Well, the fencing is a confu, because fencing related to pools is different than fencing that's not related to pools.
Right.
So if it's fencing that actually surrounds the pool and it counts as the structure, I thought it could be non-transparent. If it was a fence that you put around your property, there was a transparent, I thought there was a transparency thing. But not, not having that part in front of me on fencing.
Yeah, there was some discussion about fencing related to pools when we covered this previously. There are several rules for swimming pools that the state sets for safety, like the fencing, the transparency of the fencing, you know, equipment location, life-saving equipment, things like that, that we automatically have to apply as a matter of state. And once again, the effects of the ordinances are cumulative, right? So where this says a fence being enclosed, you know, talks about the fencing of being a minimum height of four feet and a maximum height of six feet, well, you're only allowed a four-foot fence in certain areas of your lot anyway. So you, just because it says it has to be, it could be a maximum of six feet, well, you've got to meet all the ordinances. So you wouldn't necessarily have the option to do a taller fence in an area where it's not allowed. You'd be capped at that four feet because, because of the other fencing rules that exist.
Okay, understood. Okay. So then in 7.11.3, I know we talked a little bit in our last discussion about the semi-open chain link fence. I know when I put my pool in, I wasn't allowed to have a chain link fence. So is that real, and I think, Matt, my note just said you were going to check on what, how you guys actually apply this for permitting.
Yeah, I think if we wanted to just strike the such-as-chain-link section of it, because like I said, there are some state rules that regulate what that, that safety fencing needs to be like for pool installation. And then we're just, like we do with many things, we're relying on the statute for guidance instead of trying to, you know, set some local thing that might be in conflict. That's totally fine with us.
Yeah, because it was my understanding, it's a safety issue, because children can climb over a chain link fence theoretically.
Yes, ma'am.
Right. So we would strike such-as-chain-link here?
Yeah.
Is that?
Yes, ma'am.
If everybody's in agreement?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Then it mentions chain link a little bit further. I don't know.
Yeah.
Do we want to?
We can, we can strike any reference to chain link through here. Then if, you know, if somebody has a chain link design that meets the standards and all that, and the statutory requirements, then we'll give them that option. But like you said, this kind of is steering people in that direction necessarily.
Okay, all right. And then let's see, just had a few other, just really questions, Matt, on page 25, 7.35, bed and breakfast homes. My question really around this and daycare facility adult in 7.39, safety items like egress, fire alarms, things like that, are those covered elsewhere in the ordinance so that we don't need to specify that?
Those are covered by building code, yes, ma'am. So if someone does have one of these businesses in a residential component, what we would do is process a change-of-use permit to check the zoning regulations, but also check any applicable building, fire code and regulations as well, and make sure that they're up to code at that point. Those cover things like egress, you know, signage for, you know, exit signage and stuff like that.
All right. I just wanted to clarify that for the public and for us. I think that's all I had. Mr. Chairman?
Anything?
Everything's covered.
So we should be moving on to 7.38. Wait. Convenience stores, correct?
I thought we left off at commercial peers from the last conversation.
7.36.
Did we cover commercial peers? And I could be remembering that. I had drawn a line on that one, but I was going to be off.
The last, the last thing you have in your minutes from last month is 7.35 was the last item.
Yeah.
Okay.
7.36, commercial peers.
All right. Do you have any?
We just, there was a, just looking at the comments you had sent out, you know, the collection of the comments, someone had made the comment, "This seems woefully inadequate. No expert here, but public safety should be covered." Again, are there other things that cover commercial peers that talk about some of the safety? I'm just reacting to whoever made the comment about that.
Yeah. Once again, building code, fire code would come into play with any commercial piece of property. If it's a commercial pier, CAMA automatically applies if it's waterfront, flood hazard regulation, all of those things. In addition, I'd point out that we do have a commercial pier here on the island, and we are subject to downzoning provisions. So we're probably pretty limited in what we could do with something like this to avoid running into a non-conformity situation. It's unfortunate, but it is the case. If we wanted to include a blanket statement like it needs to meet the, you know, CAMA regulations or, you know, special flood hazard regulations, those automatically apply. But if we wanted to include a note in here, that, that wouldn't be inappropriate, I don't think.
So there's Oak, there's Ocean Crest Pier, and then there's Yopon Pier. Are they both deemed commercial?
Yopon is owned by the town, so that's not a commercial entity in that.
So it's not a commercial entity. So just the, okay. So the property shall have frontage upon a collector or higher classification street, so that right now is the only requirement for a pier?
Aside from all of our existing performance standards for things like lighting, signage, buffering, applicable code requirements.
Regular inspections.
Yeah. I mean, those are all covered under our regular ordinances, so there's no, nothing above and beyond. Yes, sir.
We good? Commercial recreation establishments.
Before we dive into this one, I'd say that we did cover this one pretty extensively during our consolidation effort. The ordinance in municode hasn't updated yet. That's why it's still in here. It's the previous one. But this board made several recommendations for commercial recreation establishments under our previous review of the supplemental regulations.
So you're saying this one's been updated, it's just not reflected here?
That's right, because municode hasn't been updated yet, yes, sir.
Okay. Is that the only one that's, that falls in that kind of a category? I just want to make sure if there are others that have been updated, and we're sitting here trying to make revisions to ones that aren't updated, then it's a wasted effort kind of thing.
Yeah, that, from here on out, that looks like, you know, let me do one last check through. I believe that was the only one that I had earmarked that we hadn't been through yet. Sorry, I'm through a long section here. 7.56 and 7.57 for, and 7.59, which is privacy walls, walls, and airport hangars, and airport terminals.
Yeah.
We covered all those previously in the consolidation effort.
Have those all been accepted by the town council?
Yes, sir. I think it's approved.
So that starts at 7.56.
Yeah.
7.56, 7.57, and 7.59 are the other ones that, hang on. To my recollection, we covered...
Matt, we just repeat the sections again, where there are changes, not shown here, but that council has already approved per prior conversations?
Yeah, 7.56, 7.57.
Hang on, hang on.
Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry, it's on page 42 and 43.
42. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So does this text reflect what is approved, or you still have to make the text changes, Matt, just to be clear?
So it has done the text changes, it just has to be updated in municode in our online.
But what we see here is the final?
No.
No, so this is not the final.
Yeah.
Okay.
So 7.56, 7.57. 7.56, not condominium use, 7.58, I didn't. Okay. All right.
And they've been submitted for update, and it just hasn't been reflected in the portal yet.
So 7.58 has not...
So do we know that we're good with those sections?
Or should we review that just to make?
Well, we don't even have the new language.
We don't have, I know, but I mean, should we set that aside, saying we'll come back? We'll set that aside, yes.
Review that, so.
That'd be the future red line, is what you're saying, Matt, right?
Yeah.
For these sections.
So 7.38 is...
Should we add something about screening? Should this section also be subject to provisions of 7.33?
I thought we went over this when we did the...
Gas station.
When we looked at the UDO.
I think it has some overlap. I don't know that we dealt with convenience stores.
I know we did talk about buffering and...
Yeah, I can, we could update this to reflect what we did for gas stations previously. That'd probably be the simplest change. And for...
Buffering, parking, all of this is covered in stuff sent to council.
Oh, yes, sir. So what we can do is just, if it's the board's consensus, just update this to make sure it reflects the changes that were forwarded for gas stations.
I know we talked about daycare extensively.
Well, this one is adult. Is this one different? I know, I know exactly what you're...
No, we, when we was going over the UDO, we talked about both childcare and adult extensively.
Yeah, when we were going through the table of uses, we had significant conversation about that, as I recall.
But nothing is, seems to be reflected here, or does this reflect?
This does not. Correct, Matt?
That's correct, yeah.
So is this one that has already gone?
That has gone to council, but it doesn't reflect.
Anything y'all did previously under the consolidation and supplemental regulations review at that time has been forwarded and adopted by council.
Okay, so just, I just want to get on the same page. I was thinking that the ones we were reviewing were the ones that town council sent back and said we needed to look at these more in-depth, because that's what I thought. So the ones that we've been reviewing, these, and all of these are in that section that we've been reviewing, you're saying this has already been reviewed and accepted by town council. This is not one that they're sending back to us to consider other regulations on, or whether the regulations are adequate?
Right. Some of the, so, so some of these are, have not yet been updated in municode, so when I print off the supplemental regulations, they're, they're still in there as they were prior to the last change that was made by the town council.
So I think what would be helpful for this board is for us just to get the ones we still need to review, right, to resend over to council, as opposed to everything.
Yeah. Well, we're, at this point, we're...
We're highlighting so we know those.
So we know.
Yeah.
At this point, we're at 7.40. We've only got about 10 or 15 more to go that we even said we would talk about. So I think we can certainly push forward with what's remaining. And what I'd like to do is next month, have the final red line draft for you guys.
That would be perfect.
You can do a final once-over, cover any questions, any concerns.
Okay.
And then either make a recommendation, or if there's additional tweaks to be made, we can do it then. That'd sound fair to everybody.
Yes.
Even though they're listed here, town council is not asking us to give any further comment?
If they've already been covered, then no, sir, yeah.
Matt, under the 7.39, just curious, the one comment that was sent in about understanding this use better, can you explain what that adult covers, just from my knowledge?
I mean, adult, so what adult would cover?
Yeah, I mean, the question...
What this category, adult?
Is it elderly, mentally impaired, or is it could be all of it?
Yeah, anybody who's above school age that needs, needs care during the... Anybody who's above school age that needs, needs care during the day. So it could cover people who need, you know, physical assistance, or, you know, anything like that during the day. You don't really see this use a whole, whole lot anymore. Usually it's sort of kind of a assisted living or around-the-clock type of facility. There's not really, I can't even recall one that I've seen that was just, you know, like, operated like a daycare where it was just open during the day for care. You see a lot more at-home services and things like that instead. So it is kind of an unusual use, I would say. But yeah, it would be anybody outside of school age that needs care or assistance during the day for whatever reason, whether it's, you know, mental health or a physical disability or something like that.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Under the notes someone sent in, do we need address, hours of operation adjacent to proximity, proximity to residential areas? Typically, these are in residential areas anyhow. But like I say, you don't see, I know what this is, but you don't see a ton of them, because like I say, it's typically assisted living.
Yeah, and so, that's a good point. There's a slight difference between an adult daycare facility that's in a residential unit, like you'd see like a home daycare, versus this is looking at more like a commercial establishment that is in a, in a commercial zoning district. A home, residential-based home adult daycare would be permitted and treated differently, even at the state level. It still goes through Health and Human Services permitting and all that. So it was good to kind of separate those two out, you know, in your mind a little bit. This is a commercial, fully commercial facility versus one that would be housed in a residential facility. But certainly, you know, they already addressed outdoor activities for hours of, for hours. So if you wanted to go a step further and do, you know, commercial hours of operation.
Just real quick, we're being handed, this is, these are the things we've already covered? Say that again? Yeah, when did they have this?
March, yeah. And so, in order, in order to expedite this, I wouldn't spend a couple hours looking through that right now, but certainly take it home with you and review. And then if we have questions, when the red line comes back next month, let's tackle it then. I don't want you guys to spend, you know, thirty minutes to hour of your meeting reviewing a previously approved ordinance.
This is what was presented to council and approved.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Taylor. And on this one, this section seven, three, nine, this is allowed only in industrial? Or is, or where is this one allowed?
Let me check the table of uses for you real quick.
Thank you, sorry.
If I'm not mistaken, this is in residential.
So, you mean district, rather?
Bear with me just a second here.
Well, so-
And that would be another thing, Matt, that I'd request, is the final table of uses that was signed off on? Do you have that, do you guys have that ready, that we can have a copy of? Just so we have that as our reference, right?
We can get one for you.
That final table of uses is very important.
All of this was discussed.
Yeah, we could definitely provide that for you guys, absolutely.
Because I know there were significant changes with that table, those table, that table of uses. And I think the last thing I saw was just red lines as opposed to the final-
Yeah.
Wherever we are with the table of uses. And that, has that been updated in municode as well? Not yet, okay.
Okay.
Gotcha.
Adult daycare facility is currently a special use. It's permitted in the O and I zoning district, the CB, and the CLD. That's a, requires a special use permit in order to establish.
In what districts, Matt?
Office in an institutional, the O and I, CB, community business, and CLD.
CLD.
So it's not in residential?
Not, no.
So all the commercial ordinances would apply to this?
Yes, sir.
So that would be the screening, buffering, all of that?
And once again, a special use permit, so it would require a public hearing and town council opportunity for comment and conditions to be placed at that point.
Yeah. Does that satisfy? Seven point four oh, microbrewery and distillery. And the notes on this, buffering, parking, lotting, environmental waste concerns, hours of operation, and something about screening. All of that, it's only allowed in commercial districts, correct?
That's correct, yes, sir.
So that's going to apply, all of these factors apply into that district anyhow? Is-
Hours of operation, would they, would that be, that wouldn't be?
No.
No, it would not. We don't have a blanket hour of operation ordinance.
You know, we talked about this last time. I mean, you know, some, having some kind of a, I'll call it a templated hours of operation for businesses in general. Now, these are all in CLD and all that, so it's a little bit different. But do we care if they're operating at, you know, one o'clock, two o'clock in the morning? Or should we put some-
I'm going to say from experience, most places like this will shut down around ten anyhow, because it's not a dance club, it's not a party scene, it's food, beverage-
Alcohol, yeah.
Family.
Yeah.
So it's not going to be open much past ten.
If that's the case, then I would probably go in and put an hour of operation, basically being eleven o'clock, or something like that. But if, if, if we're not going to do that, then we're saying to them, you can be open till one or two o'clock. And we can't go back and change it once they've set those hours of operations, right? Because that's down zoning.
Going to jump in here and say, we have a microbrewery in, in operation. So if, if the town wanted to, through zoning, establish hours of operations, the first step for us to be, would be to check those hours of operations to avoid creating illegal-
Yeah, and that's, that's my point. You talking about Lone Rider?
No.
We have solar brewing here as well.
Oh, solar, okay. They actually do brewing onsite, okay. Yeah, I would probably do, and again, my only thing is, I would agree with you. I'm not trying to be punitive to them. If they're staying open till ten, I would say just eleven, or something like that. But to not state it, if somebody decides that they want to be open till one o'clock, we can never go back and make them close. And again, solar brewing, all of those, they're just one row behind, you know, adjacent to residential. They might be in a zoned location, but it's just being, I think, a little kinder. And again, I'm not worried about the business.
Yeah.
I'm worried about the traffic that's in the lot and people who've been there two or three hours and maybe had some drinking, and they're loud, and that's more of what I'm concerned about than the business itself, so.
And, and we've actually stated hours of operation for a lot of other establishments.
Right.
Flea markets, food trucks. So we've set the precedent that we're doing that in these commercial districts, right? So why would we not do that for this kind of establishment? Is my, just for consistency is all I'm got, is where I'm going with it.
Online, it shows nine PM it's closing.
Nine?
Yeah, I mean, we'll be happy to reach out to the business owners to confirm, just to make sure we're not putting anybody in the line.
Yeah, we said ten.
Yeah.
Disruptive to the business owner, right?
And I think Lone Rider is probably about the same. They're not a, they don't brew onsite, but they are a restaurant that serves their own brewed alcohol, both beer and liquor. And so I don't know if that falls under a microbrewery, distillery, or not.
That would be a restaurant.
Yeah.
That would be a restaurant, okay, thank you.
And what about parking? Is that not something that they're required to have, like other, or is that covered general?
That's covered in our general ordinances.
Okay, and lighting?
Lighting also covered.
Some precedence, okay.
Yes, yes, Matt.
So the only thing to add in seven dot four oh is some hours of operation? Agreed?
Yeah. Seven point four one, farm craft produce markets. And the notes seems inadequate for setback, signage, lotting, need more discussion. See seven point four two flea markets, similar language, outdoor sales and displays similar language here. Seven point four four.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a couple of notes to some of those comments. First, the next two uses, farm craft produce markets and flea markets are special uses, so they would have to get a special use permit, public hearing opportunity for council to place conditions on the approval of these. Also, you know, if the, if the intent is to mirror the flea market, you know, standards, that'd be a pretty simple amendment to make, and some of those do, do make sense between uses.
Bless you. I bless you. So would it not make sense just to put this under one category and have same?
We could merge them if you wanted to, yeah, absolutely.
Would that not make, we're trying to merge and make things simpler anyhow. That would simplify the whole process.
I'm happy to consolidate where we end.
Are the districts the same for farm, craft, produce markets, flea markets?
That's a good question, let me, let me double-check that for you.
Can't merge them if they're different districts, right?
That's right, yeah. Be a little tough. Bear with me just a moment here. So farm craft and produce markets are listed as special, oh, you caught me. Those are listed as special uses in the CB, the CR, and the CLD, whereas the flea market is a special use in the CLD only.
Okay.
Yeah, so no opportunity to-
Just put the same language for-
Certainly could, yeah.
Yeah.
And then, you know, in seven dot four two for flea markets, the hour of operations are established by the special use permit. We have a similar regulation for the farm craft and produce markets as well.
So that brings us down to four, seven point four three, food trucks.
And I thought we just did a revision of this, Matt, like two years ago, didn't we?
Yeah.
And cleaned all this up.
Yeah. And this, this is reflective of those changes, so this, this has a chance to- The only thing I would, I don't have the comment documents in front of me, but one thing I would ask the board to consider is whether having an annual maximum on the number of food truck permits issued is still, you know, still applicable. I know when we rolled this out, we were making it easier to have food trucks in a lot of locations, so there was some concern about the potential influx of food trucks. You know, we, we do usually sell out of food truck permits.
Could we eliminate the maximum number?
You could eliminate, you could raise the maximum number, eliminate the maximum number, whenever the board's comfortable with.
Right now, how many, how many requests you get above that ten?
Oh, we, like I said, we get quite a few. We, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but we do usually run out of annual permits. As soon as one comes available, if someone doesn't re-up, you know, somebody's ready to take the next one.
I would just say we take it out, or move it to a number like thirty or something, because the thing with food trucks, that's, that's difficult to have a fixed number, is, in full disclosure, I own a lot that we allow food trucks to be on. Well, there might be four or five different food trucks that want to be on that lot at any, now, at any given time, there are two, one or two, okay? But somebody who wants to be there just for one day, needs to get an interim merchant permit. Well, ten, for them to be there one day. And then the other thing is, when the concerts and different festivals go on, you'll see more than ten.
Yeah.
You know, there, so there is a demand for it. And I also think food trucks are a great low-cost way of introducing more restaurant scene, especially for residents, who oftentimes during the summer don't have options, because we're not willing to wait two hours or an hour and a half to get a pizza or whatever. So I would be highly in favor of just taking the maximum off.
Totally agree.
Just given the nature of food truck business.
I have a, I have a comment, though, because in seven dot four, three dot two, there are limitations about location and spacing and things like that, right? So if you don't have a limit on it, how do you make sure that the adequate spacing is there, et cetera, et cetera?
That would be on the property owner, I believe. So what the process is, I have to write a letter to the town granting permission to a food truck to be on my lot. And I have to be the one to say that under no circumstance will there be more than two, which is what I'm regulated to have. So it's, it's on the business owner or the lot owner to manage that.
But some of this-
We'll review that during the permitting process. So like, say, say you don't have a vacant lot, but you have a business that has a really big parking lot that's, you don't use all the time, you know, it way exceeds the, the minimum parking requirement, and you say, we'd like to park a food truck out there. When we review that permit, we'll look at the placement, the intended placement of the food truck and make sure it meets, you know, separation requirements, placement requirements, avoiding impact parking, things like that. We've done quite a few of those. So it is kind of a two-tiered process, right? Because you have the zoning review, which is looking at the placement and the standards, that, and then there's the business license permitting, the business license side, which is the cap on, on ten. And that's for not town events. Town events are exempt, food trucks working in a town event are exempt from this.
Also, it's more revenue to the town to have them apply for, I mean, honestly.
I thought, though, in our prior discussion, and again, this has been, we've all said it a few times. But I think that there was some concern about some of the restaurants and whatnot as these food trucks being competing businesses. So there was a discussion about the proper balance between our current existing food providers and these food trucks, where they would locate, and would they compete with our existing restaurants and food providers? I think we were trying to strike a proper balance between both parties, I think, is where, like, the location stuff came in, as I recall.
Well, it's funny, though, because you can have two restaurants competing with each other side by side.
Agreed.
But you can't have a restaurant and then a food truck, but side by side, competing. And it, that makes no sense to me.
Agreed.
The other thing with the food trucks, I'll give you an example, like Roberts, I believe, sets up at Back to Shuckers. So four days a week, he's there at Back to Shuckers. Well, he's, whether it's Robert there four days a week, or whether it's four different food trucks there, those same four days, they're all the same competition to any restaurant that's open during those lunch hours, or whatever.
I wasn't intending on opening that discussion again. I was just trying to explain that that's, when we went through this conversation, we just wanted to try to balance the needs and the requirements and the concerns of existing businesses, that's all.
Well, and I think the difference is, to your point, because I agree, is that whether it's one truck that's there or four, the number of interim merchant permits given does not negatively impact the, you know, the, the competition. I would actually argue that if there are four different trucks, and you don't know which one's going to be there on any given day, you're probably more apt to go to a restaurant where you know what that menu's going to be, and you know what they're serving, and that's what you, you know what I mean? If it's one that's there four days, then there's some regularity, you can go in. That's more competitive than if it's four different trucks on four days. So I think we're getting there, I think the thirty, I mean, lifting the maximum, and-
Because it sounds like the property owner, whether that's a commercial business or a private owner, has the discretion and can help make the determination of how many are suitable, I'll use that term, just for-
Yeah, so, like Mr. Gilbert mentioned, you know, the, the property owners, when they get their zoning permit, to actually allow a food truck to sit there is the responsible party for making sure that there's adequate room, et cetera. And if there's not, you know, we can deny the zoning permit and on it.
So are we striking seven, four, three, dot seven totally? Or are we, because there's reference to outdoor seating associated on certain lot sizes, what are we doing?
I believe, sorry, let me get back to it. I think the, what we would do is, under seven, four, three, dot three, the second to last sentence, where it says the maximum number of food truck licenses to be issued is ten per year, with the restriction, that's the part that I would strike.
Yeah, yes.
Basically, you still have all the zoning requirements, you still have all the underlying placement standards, but what this is saying is that we can issue more than ten licenses per year for food trucks to operate in the town. But they, once again, the, all the zoning restrictions about placement, et cetera, timing, hours of operation would still apply.
Okay, agreed.
Any other comments on that section? Let's move to seven point four four, outdoor sales and- Let's move to 7.44, outdoor sales and displays. And I did not receive any comments on that section. Anyone have any?
Does this one, this one does not talk about signage, so, okay, good. Because I think we're taking that one up soon.
Yeah. If we're good on that, 7.45, seafood processing, the notes are allowed in CLD, not CB, not near restaurants, parking for customers, air quality, groundwater and stormwater requirements. Matt, allowed in CLD but not CB.
I'm looking that up right now for you, sir.
If I think of public nuisance here, the potential public nuisance related to this one, it would be the disposal, you know, you know, you could garbage, you know, gosh, in the fall, you know, neighbors who fish, I, I can barely walk out my front door from where they've just, you know, they've not really secured their, you know, the fish entrails and everything, and they've put it in the garbage can, which are all right there. I mean, it can be horrendous. So I, I do think that's probably the one nuisance that we would want to safeguard. If it's just CLD, I have less concern, but you still have other businesses and other uses in that space. And so disposal, to me, would just be something that-
Bless you.
Seafood processing is CLD and industrial district permitted uses.
Seafood processing purchasing, so does Hagen-Sonns, would they fall under this?
Uh, let me check the definition for this.
Because it's purchasing sales and sales, because that would be CB, right?
It would be the, the processing, the difference in the processing versus the sale of a thing would be the difference there.
It's all one.
Well, Matt, can you clarify, is this like Hague's, or would it be like Barnum Town, where the boats come in and actually?
That's, I'm looking up the definition for it right now. Bear with me just a second.
It may be vague on this one, because the purchasing and sales is what I think of a Hague, not the processing, to your point.
If it's purchasing and sales, I'm, I'm assuming this would be like industrial, where the boats actually offload the product, and they process it and sell it to restaurants.
I'm, I'm with you on your interpretation. I'm just saying, with the words purchasing and sales, I'm thinking now it's a wider definition.
A wider definition.
And if it includes Hagen-Sonns, to me, it helps to visualize that as another example of this, to your point.
Yeah, so the, it's not, it's something that doesn't have a definition in our ordinance, so what we would rely on then is the, the processing part of it versus just sales. So you can buy fish in a grocery store, that doesn't make it a, you know, a processing facility. So something like, I've never been in Hagen-Sonns, maybe someone can illuminate me on the-
Just to see, it's just a fishmonger, it's just you going to buy shrimp.
If you're just buying and selling, that, that's retail, that, that's not the processing.
They do some processing there, though.
They do, they get in, they get in fish, and then they, they're cutting it in the back, and I, I think they, again, I'm, I'm not, I just want to define if purchasing and sales is more akin to retail.
It is, yes.
I just, if that's what those two mean, that, so that, then it is allowed in CB. Because Hagen-Sonns is located in CB, that's not CLD.
Right, and that, that's correct, and it, it may be that it predates these ordinances, I don't know off my head, I'm sorry, I can't really speak to that. I can say from a zoning standpoint, we would look at operation like Hagen-Sonns as a retail establishment versus a processing facility. So it would be treated as such.
So then, do we want to take out purchasing and sales from this definition and just have it be seafood processing?
It's fine with me, yeah. It wouldn't hurt me.
I think that was a conversation we had during the table of uses, to try to merge as many uses as possible, to simplify the table of uses just as background.
Okay.
So you guys understand, the more we break apart what we've already decided to put together, we're back to where we started with the complex table of uses.
And I'm not necessarily suggesting we break them apart, I just think if we, if we're trying to include or not limit the retail in this, then just have some sec, just have four point, 7.45.2, and then we can just call out those elements that might relate to a retail, because now you're talking about hours of operations and some of those things as well. And also, this, the note said allowed in CLD, question mark, not in CB, and I see this one, like Hagen-Sonns is in CB, so it is allowed in CB.
Yep.
Not sure what the table of uses, and I'm sorry, I did not bring that to reference. But just making sure that we're clear, and it might have, just need a few build-outs if we want it to be broader.
Yeah, I can clarify that for everybody, I mean, that's something we have to clarify in retail versus processing.
Clem's is probably not, are they in the town?
They're not.
Okay, all right. Yeah, those might be the-
That's the only.
Only two in the town, both in CB.
Yeah. And they, like Matt said, that may predate the current table of uses.
Yeah, and I can, there's a couple of ways that we could tackle this. One would be to just add a definition, one would be to, to, you know, to make sure that it's clear what we're talking about here.
I would add a definition.
Versus retail. Another would be to clarify it through the supplemental regulations, things like that. So if the, if the consensus of the board is we want to clarify the retail sale of, you know, seafood products versus the processing, and this will apply to the processing, not necessarily the retail.
Right, I'm, I'm good with that, too.
Yeah.
That's enough direction for me to work off of.
So just to add a definition to clarify the differences.
And in this definition, we would take out purchasing sales, is that what you're saying, and have that in a different definition?
If you just struck it out, that would be, if you just struck out sales, that would be, you know, that, that would be doable on our end.
Then we have a use that we're not-
No, it would, it would just fall under general retail.
I think purchasing and sales are going to go together, because Hague is buying his fish from someone and then turning around and selling it. Same with Publix and-
Whatever you guys are comfortable with, I'm just saying, if you take purchasing and sales off of this, it's automatically covered under general retail anyway. We wouldn't have a conflict or anything like that, or a use that's not listed in the table.
Just take purchasing and sales out of the terminology.
But I think the issue was, when we went through the table of uses, was a seafood establishment, to your point, Mr. Gilbert, has different public impacts with disposal of their, whatever they're working with, and smell, things like that, than just any other retail establishment. In other words, the risks to the public are a little bit different environmentally with seafood processing and sales, let me use the right term, than just a regular retail establishment who's selling trinkets and souvenirs and things like that.
It's the process in part that you're saying we have the issue.
They, they have to dispose of overdue seafood, all other kind of things, and that, there's just, to me, there's a different public potential impact to anybody who sells seafood than any, than somebody who sells souvenirs. I don't see them as the same retail, for different reasons.
Okay.
So then, under retail?
If we, I understand your point.
The disposal of meat products, or meat bride products, or, or just, or, food products, maybe even.
I thought we were just heading down toward adding definitions to clarify seafood processing versus seafood retail, and leave the ordinance as it sits here. And just add definitions that clarify.
I think there are two ways to do this one, clearly.
Just add the definitions.
That works for me, if that-
So we'll take 7.45 and expand it to differentiate?
Well, no, you just add the definitions to the supplemental regs, add it as a definition. And what, what do you call the definitions, an appendix to the supplemental regs?
Appendix A of the UDO, we just add a definition, or a couple of definitions just to clarify.
Okay, I'm so sorry, and you're so much better at this than I. So you're, when you're saying add a definition, you're saying not under section 0.45.
Don't change this, add a definition under the definition appendix for the UDO that defines, what do we mean when we say seafood processing versus seafood?
Sales.
Sales.
So in that definition, then, is that where you're going to tackle the disposal, those types of things?
Separate issue, I think if we want to add that here, we should, as to the supplemental regs, right?
So just add it as a four point, a 7.45.2, 0.3, 0.4, that, that way? Is that how you would add it here?
No, in the UDO, it would be in the appendix. The definition will be in the appendix.
I'm with you on the definition. I'm now talking about like the dispose, the issues that you were talking about, the disposable, the disposal of meat and those kinds of things.
The environmental concerns.
Where do you add those? Are you adding those back in the definition, or are you adding those as another bullet underneath this same section here?
Yeah, could we ask you to, to look up some best practices with this kind of establishment and come back to us with a recommendation as to what other, you know?
Totally fair.
And I'm sorry, I'm just trying to figure out how you do it, I'm with everybody in what we're trying to do. I'm just trying to follow the conversation. Because the other thing is seafood processing, if we go back, well, the, the retail side of it is in CB. Processing, and maybe Hague's does do processing, because it does, and that's still fine. If it's not in CB, this use should be in CB as well, if it's not currently that way in the table of uses.
This can certainly be amended to include sales of seafood stuff. Now, the, but, I mean-
I'm going to bet, sales is already there, it's the processing part that I didn't know whether it was-
I understand, but what you're talking about, talking about is expanding this use into the CB, because there's a place that sells fish in the CB zoning district. This particular use is permitted in the CLD and the ID zoning district. So that's a little bit beyond the, the scope of what we've been asked to do here, is to start monkeying with the, the table of uses again. I'm happy to do it if the board would like us to. I'll also clarify that a lot of what you guys have brought up today is potential concerns with, with seafood sales, processing, et cetera, would fall under categories of environmental and nuisance ordinances. So if somebody was operating a business in a way that it was becoming a, a public health safety issue or a nuisance standard, we can enforce it, we can enforce those nuisance standards on a business just as quick as we can a residential property owner.
Yeah, I was just saying by that, my point was, I don't think we should break this apart again and revise the table of uses again, because we have one business that's in a CB district that already exists, two, other than Hague.
You've got Pelican and Hague.
Okay.
But to your point, what I can do, just to-
During the day, it's a seafood, you go in and buy your raw seafood. It's only at night that they're frying the seafood up. You can, you can go in there and buy raw seafood, uncooked seafood, all day.
I think since we've got such a vigorous debate here, what I'll do is go back and, as Carrie mentioned, research some best practices and see what some neighboring jurisdictions have, and, and bring something forward for you, the red line that seems to make sense and might work for us as well, hopefully kind of tackle some of these issues.
So just to throw this out there, so to me, if there is a commercial processing, I think the best place for that is in a CLD.
Yeah.
Okay? If it's incidental processing, like Hague, or retail seafood, I think both of those, currently, they're both in CB, so we can't necessarily downzone and say they can't be in CB, right?
Yeah, you couldn't tweak them any further to restrict the use, no, sorry.
Say it again?
You couldn't tweak it any further to restrict the use, no, sorry.
So to me, I would, if it is a retail seafood place, I mean, we are the beach, and every, I think people come here and want to buy seafood. We, we actually need more seafood restaurants on the island, honestly. So to me, I would allow for the commercial, I mean, for the retail purchasing and incidental processing, I would allow that in CB. If it's not currently in CB, I would actually change it, vote to change it for CB. Then leave the CLD, what I think of as commercial processing, where you're doing it in a much bigger quantity, and there's not really that retail component there. So that's my 10 cents, you guys, you'll come back with best practices on that one.
Yeah.
But I don't want to discourage seafood sales, you know, here.
Agreed, understood.
Yeah. So Matt's coming back with best practice.
I'll do some research.
Let's move on to 7.46, sexually oriented businesses, only in the industrial district currently.
That's right.
All the other notes that I see here is covered by state.
Hours of operation are covered by state?
Not hours, but-
See, because sexually oriented business could be, it could be a topless joint or something like that, right? It could be a movie house, or it could be, I don't even know if these still exist anymore, like an adult bookstore.
Those don't exist.
I, I just saw one in Wilmington, but anyway, I mean, I didn't go by it, I just drove by it, noticed it, and I'm like, I'm surprised that still exists. No, 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 I'm just saying, they do still exist, and it's right there on market, you know? I'm not saying I go in it, but I'm saying that that's, because I'm noticing all these things. Now, my point, though, is there are so many things that could fall under this definition that, to me, hours of operation, I do think we want to set. I, I, to me, this is kind of a place where-
Okay, said hours of operation.
The evening, yeah, yeah. Evening after hour kind of thing is where your problems are, you know what I mean? Lighting, signage, property line buffer, yep, similar requirements for tattoo piercing. Or if it, if it has alcohol sales, is that then fall under alcohol, or, you know, how that would be governed, or?
That would be covered under the state, under the ALA.
Under the what? Alcohol?
Law enforcement.
Okay. So in terms of, okay, so if it is a sexually oriented business, and then it sells alcohol, any concerns that we have related to clientele having a lot of alcohol, that's going to all be covered?
That's all covered by the state.
Okay, okay. So it may just be the hours of operation, then?
Just said hours of operation.
And I would say 1:00 to 3:00 PM, is what I would say. I'm just saying, that's, that's prime, prime shopping time for that stuff, I would imagine. No, I would, look, I think 10:00 isn't 10:00 what we set for other things.
You do standard across.
Look, I'm still not sure who's getting paid to want this one in the UDO, but I'm not, I don't want it in the UDO.
And I'll, I'll provide a little bit of context here, I'll be happy to map this out for you guys. 7.46.1.1, the use cannot be located closer, no closer than 1,500 feet, as measured in a straight line from the property line to property line of any church, place of worship, public or private elementary or secondary school, child daycare or nursery, publicly funded or maintained recreational facility or open space areas, residentially zoned or residentially used properties, or any other establishment on, with an on-premise ABC license. I have not mapped this, but my impression is that there's not many locations, even in the town, that that exists to begin with. But just to add some context there.
We just want to give them ample space. No, we, we just want to give these businesses ample space.
Okay. With, yeah.
For hours, what are we doing?
Till 10:00.
10:00. No, this is 9:00 to 10:00, I'm, I'm fine with that, I guess. Somebody's out there at 9:00 in the morning, God be with them.
Okay, tattoo piercing parlors.
Now, this one, go ahead.
Notes, only in CLD, rules around tattoo and sexually oriented business, no.
Wait, you're-
It's not the same.
I think I wrote that, and my point was, we got more, more regulations around tattoo than sexually oriented.
And sexually oriented businesses, exactly.
Does that make sense?
It doesn't make sense.
Well, and this one does include public library, did the other one include public library as well? I didn't hear you say it, but you might have, anyway, you'll look for that. Yeah, I think 10:00 is the same, I think the hours should be all standard, and I would just say 9:00 to 10:00 under this one.
And that's only on the island, correct?
What do you mean?
Yeah.
CLD is where-
Yeah, CLD.
Well, we've got one in CB, I think, wait, don't we have a, do we have a tattoo over here in the Pelican, in that shopping center, where Pelican, I mean Pirate Stack, excuse me?
Not that I know of.
I think so.
Okay.
I only know of one around.
So I think the CLD district was to move those off island, was kind of the intent, right, in the zoning district. In the zoning district.
And seven point four eight vendors yard sales. And currently.
Mr. Chairman, back, so, so seven dot four, seven dot four dot one, we're revising those hours, right?
Nine to 10.
Nine A M. to 10 P M. Just for clarification. Right, okay. Sorry, go ahead.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Vendors and yard sales. All of, these are all covered under the permit that?
Yeah, so these are covered under our business licensing permitting process, which is actually not in the U D O. It's in a, a chapter of the general code of ordinances. Chapter 10 covers permitting and licensing for vendors, itinerant merchants.
So if someone wants to do a yard sale in their front yard, right now, they would call the town and get a permit?
Correct.
There's a note about table of uses currently only says vendors, which is not a clear use description.
Vendors are defined in the, in the chapter 10 section. We do have definitions for vendors, itinerant merchants, peddlers, yard sales. Those are all defined in a, in a separate section. In my opinion, yes ma'am.
Veterinarian clinics with associated kennels. The notes are buffers, fence and parking should have hours of operation common with other business and need screening requirements. I thought buffers, parking and screening are already covered in the commercial.
Yeah, they would be treated as a commercial establishment for, in terms of buffers. As we've done with some similar uses, if the board felt that a specific buffer was more in line with, with a specific use, that, that's okay. You could clarify that, I believe, a B two buffer calls for an opaque fence in addition to some vegetation. You know, especially if you have had the honor to work in many places with kennels, and it does get loud. Sometimes an opaque fence is not a bad idea, a little something like that.
Well, I think the runs are still probably, the, the noise from the runs are probably, that doesn't come out right. But you know what I mean? The, the, should we put an hour of operation on the, the outside runs? Because that's where your noise happens, in a kennel, in this type of business. Where you'd have to have the dogs inside after a set hour. So that they're not just out there barking at everything, every single thing that's running around them.
Maybe not necessarily a bad idea, but the, instead of, I've worked in these types of places before. There, there's times when you have to keep a patient overnight. And sometimes they are, just because of the size of your indoor spaces, you know, have to get kept in an outdoor run. So I, I'd hate to have a situation where we're telling somebody they can't keep a patient overnight, you know, because they don't have room for them inside and we can't, and they, they're not allowed to keep them overnight outside. I, I understand your point though, like you, you don't want them necessarily have, you know, a full boarding facility outdoors, you know, where there's, you know, 30 outdoor run dogs, things like that, that are kept outside.
We have a noise ordinance, correct?
We do.
Already, and that goes, what, till?
11 o'clock is whatever.
The noise ordinance is, you've got to have a police officer take a reading of the noise at a point in time. And so I want to just understand, so in the past, when we've created our dog, every run has an indoor portion. So if it's raining, the dog isn't out in the run. If it's 90 or 100 degrees, your dog isn't out in the run. They're coming inside where there's water and their food and, you know, that's where they're going to sleep. And there's usually a door that separates the indoor from the run itself. So that's what I would think they would be, not an and or. So my only thought is after a certain hour, and again, I would be reasonable, six, seven, eight, you know, something decent. You would just want to close the outdoor, you know, that's the hours for the outside portion of the run. The indoor portion is where the dog's going to reside and stay cool and eat and sleep and all that good stuff. And again, that's more because if you had multiple dogs out in that run, again, I think that's just noise. Now, is this C L D only, or can this be?
I believe it's C L D only, but let me check for you, sir.
Yeah, and I want to, you know, the whole notion of C L D, because at town council, where they're talking about residential developments and they're wanting 20% of the residential development to allow for businesses. So I feel like the C L, the C L D is not going to be this isolated, like an industrial district. It's not going to be, it's going to be around homes. The way that I, I felt from the conversation, they wanted to design. If that's the case, I just think having a limit on, I mean, having some type of an hours of operation for the outdoor run portion, only that portion. Because you definitely want to allow them to keep their dog there overnight. That's the whole, one of the purposes of this whole.
So then, for the design of the facility, it would have to include an indoor and outdoor?
I would bet you they all do.
They all do.
Yeah, because you've got rain, snow, you've got hurricane, you've got 90, 100 degree weather, you know? So you've almost always got an indoor climate controlled portion. And I'm just saying, the dogs need to be in at that point and closed, and something reasonable, I mean, eight o'clock?
Yeah, I mean, we, the veterinary, you're right. First of all, the veterinarian animal clinic without outdoor kennel is, is limited to the C L D as a permitted use, it's not permitted in the, the C B zoning district, none of that question came up earlier. While we talk about this, I am reminded, and I'd have to go back and check how we permitted it. I believe the new sea biscuit facility was permitted because they do provide medical care as a, as a veterinarian office, because they do rescue and medical care there. And as, as you know, some of those are birds that have to stay.
They do have theirs outside.
Yeah, they do have to stay outside. So we're getting a little bit of a sticky, tricky weekend.
Dogs then? Are we talking about just, I mean, cats aren't going to make this, cats aren't, the birds aren't. I mean, can you just caveat it that, you know, for those that, I mean, when I hear a run, I think dog. Maybe they have, maybe that's what they call them in the bird, you know, in the broader veterinary definition. But I'm only thinking of noise pollution from multiple dogs being outside at all hours of the night and not having any limitation on that. That's my only, I'm not trying to over architect this, I'm just trying to limit the noise to abutting residential or other businesses.
Matt, if we currently have a facility on the island that is outdoor, no matter what we do, it would be down zoning.
They're only allowed in C L D currently, right?
That's right.
Hers has been allowed.
It's off island.
That's off.
Right? C L D is off island?
But he's saying that the Pelican rescue sea biscuit.
That's right.
Is on island. It's actually in a house.
It's in the town limits. I mean, there's a, they, they have a new facility on Long Beach Road. For those that haven't ridden by, it's really great. They, they keep a lot of the birds outside there as well. And we had to help them through these regulations because they, they have to, you know, they can't keep all of, some of these birds are huge. They can't keep them outside.
Can we just not add something that says for, for establishments, for establishments that have external runs for, for dogs? You know, that dogs shall be, you know, brought inside after some reasonable time, eight o'clock?
I don't see why you couldn't.
I mean, it, to me, I'm not trying to over bake this, I'm just trying to say.
Just add that one section.
I can't think of another animal that we're gonna, or another vet that allows outdoor runs. Because usually vets, if they're staying overnight, they're, they're having medical care. They're not going to leave them outside. This one was, if there is a kennel, an, an, a run, an external run. Or if it's, if we just want to stay closer to just a veterinary, then just eliminate the need for outdoor runs, since it's a vet, not a kennel boarding. You know what I mean? We could just eliminate the outdoor run. I'm not trying to go there, I'm just trying to limit the noise, that's all. It's like, I feel like I'm Henry Fonda in 12 Angry Men, you know, constantly battling.
We probably want to add an exception for an emergency situation, obviously.
For what?
For an emergency situation, if there's a, you know, for keeping pets indoor at eight o'clock from eight until nine the next day, you know, you're gonna have to have staff go out and walk them, you know, they're gonna have to have times that they have to go check them. So I, I think you, you would want to include some type of exception that, you know, if a, if a neighbor sees a veterinary assistant walking a dog outside after hours because it's their time to go check on the dogs at night.
I'm fine with that, I'm fine with that. I mean, I'm just talking about.
That's what I would worry about in that situation is, you know, you know, when people will see the rule and see something, some, something happening, if there's not an exception in there.
Yeah. I'm talking about like multiple runs, where you've got multiple dogs all going crazy. We have fox on the island, we have feral cats on the island, all kinds of things that are just going to stimulate a lot of barking in the hours, off hours. Okay, so you're going to propose something and then, well, thank you.
All right. Seven point five zero, regulation of forestry activities. No ordinance adopted by town. I did not see any notes on that.
Yeah.
That's pretty sophisticated.
Forestry, forestry is pretty heavily regulated by the, the state, forestry activities.
Solar farm.
Didn't we decide we're going to table that? Didn't we decide solar, wireless, we're just going to table those until we get a little bit more information?
Yeah. Solar, wind and wireless.
Yeah.
Facilities, I think.
Heavily. Seven point five two, temporary sales use.
Yeah, the question, why, why limit four events per year or seven, or seven calendar days of length? Does anybody know why we were trying to?
Give us some background on this one.
Well, what was the question again? I apologize.
Seven point five two temporary sales uses.
Says why limit to four events per year or seven calendar days of length? Why are we limiting it today?
I don't, this, this ordinance has been in place since I've been here, so I can't really speak to the background of, of why you would do that. You could make it, similar to food trucks, you could make it as often or as little as you feel is appropriate.
I don't know why we would need to.
Our resident historian knows.
I was gonna say.
Can you give us some background, Lisa? Okay.
But I mean, do we care if that's, I mean, they've got to do a permit, right? If they do a yard sale, they've got to go to the town and, and do a permit.
And you're only allowed two permits for yard sales per year now, correct?
Good ad, that's. That's good information right there.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, because this is talking about such temporary uses shall include the assembly of people for entertainment, festivals, holidays, social, political, religious. Personally, I don't know why we would want to, I think noise is something we would want to limit. But I don't know why we would want to limit the number of hours. I mean, if you've got a Christmas tree lot, which wouldn't be a bad thing if somebody has in the C L D land and they want to do a commercial, you know, a Christmas tree lot, that's going to be longer than seven days.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? And why wouldn't we want a pumpkin patch lot there, you know? And, and things that families want and, and would, would benefit.
Uh, may be conducted from three calendar days prior to Thanksgiving until 5 P M. on Christmas Eve. So Christmas tree sale is explicitly allowed to run that whole period.
Yeah, but I'm just, if you can only do three, like, I'm not sure why we would want to limit the number of, you know, events, or four events per year. I don't know why we would want to limit that.
Matt, could it be, it was a type thing of that many events kind of crossed a threshold that created other?
I, I think, you know, based on what the clerk just said, that, that was likely the scenario that happened was that there was a, a time period when there were multiple locations that were having multiple temporary events and sales and things like that. And so it was amended to restrict those in some way.
Just leave this as is.
Wait, and limit it to four events per year? Wait, where is this allowed? What, what, what area is this one allowed?
The C B and the C L D. It's on seven dot five two dot two.
So what would that, if Christmas tree, pumpkin patch?
Well, those were just two examples, those were just two examples.
Those are exempt from this.
Yeah, so even in that number count, four, four. But I still, still, I mean, if somebody owns a lot, I mean, if somebody owns land in C L D and they want to do something, I don't know why four events per year, we should limit them, even if it's not the Christmas tree or whatever.
I think that's how the text is reading it, saying if more than four events occur within 365 days, they must be located in basically a nonprofit, a 501 C type for tax purposes. They're just saying where you can do more than four a year. Am I reading that right, Matt?
That's right.
We're not limiting it, we're just saying if you do more than four a year, they have to be in a certain place.
You are, because, so I guess it would have to be leased by a 501 C three, I don't know.
The nonprofits can do more than four.
Yeah, anything can be a C of 501 C three though. I mean, it's a nonprofit, but let's not think it's always a benevolent, like the demon worshippers of America could have a 501 C three. I mean, so that's just a, a non-tax entity. You know, if we wanted, if we feel like we need to limit the number of events, then let's put the number at 15. You know, if we feel like it's going to get out of hand, we're talking about something that somebody owns a lot and they want to do something, some kind of a temporary sales. The guy who has the fishing, where he sets up his, his fishing poles and he sells fishing, do you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, that's a.
Like that, to me, that's a, if somebody owns, if somebody owns a lot and they want to have him come out there and do that, that's a benefit to all of us. He gives you lessons, he helps you pick out good equipment. I don't know why we want to limit that kind of thing to four a year.
Lisa, can you think, or can you think of where that came from? You or Matt have any history on that?
I'd also say that with temporary sales, and this is not here necessarily, this ordinance has been in place since I've been here. But you do see instances where it slowly becomes a permanent temporary sale location.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm saying we can put a limit in there, I just think four is, you know, low.
Well, I think, I think then you got to change it, because you got to take away the restriction for it to be a nonprofit or non-tax entity to do it, right? You got to eliminate that part too. If you're saying anybody can do it, just more than four, right? Then that's changing that whole, that whole sentence there. That starts with if more than four events occur within a 365 calendar day period.
I, I would just say, I would just put it at a number and then take that whole sentence out.
What, what is the risk to the town with temporary uses and sales generally? From a zoning planning perspective, what is the risk to the town?
I think the, the main risk you would run is what I just mentioned, is that.
Temporary becoming permanent.
Yeah, basically you set up a, a de facto flea market location where you have, you know, the same folks out there at the same times, bringing the same tables out there and you turn a vacant piece, commercial piece of property into
Yep.
a de facto yard sale, because you have, you know, every other weekend, there's a, the same thing out there.
But is that a bad, I'm trying to find the bad in that, I mean.
So I think, I think where Mr. Gilbert's going is the very first sentence, where they permitted and what zones, provided that no more than four events occur within a 365 day period. I think, Mr. Gilbert, I'm, you're suggesting that that four number right there becomes different number, bigger number.
A bigger number, or what you could do to stop this risk that, Matt, you're talking about, is that no event shall, any, any individual event shall not be more than four days, if you want to do something like that.
The next sentence says each individual sales event shall be limited to two calendar days duration.
Okay, that's probably too little, but, but that could deal with the risk he's talking about as well. So yes, I would raise the number.
Okay.
And then I would say it's probably more like a four day. And then let that, because that will stop, I, I don't know how much of this you're going to have, but again.
That's why I asked for the risk.
The issue though is if you own a piece of land and you're not developing on the land, I don't want us all to think that that land has a cost to it. You're paying taxes on that lot. And so what happens is, cuz it's the same with residential, you know, the capable lots. Talk to the gentleman, you know, the grandson, he goes, "Look, the tax bill I have on all this land, I can't keep this land. I've gotta sell it." Well, do we really want that? Do we really wanna encourage them to sell it because they don't have, you know, an optimal use or something like that? Because they, so anyway, I'm trying to give individual property owners an ability to at least get some. So I would limit, I would say if we wanna have 30 events and then no event shall be more than four days or something like that. And then we may never have this come back. There may not even be an instance where this comes back. But, and then I would take out that it has to be a 501(c)(3) or what have, I would just take out that requirement.
And Taylor just brought up a good point, that it, you know, to kinda thread the needle too, you know, if we expand the number of times you might have it, you might limit the number of retailers you might have, you know, so like, you say, just like we do with food trucks, you know, you have to have a certain sized piece of property to have more than two food trucks on it. You know, you might, we might say, to kinda thread the needle a little bit here, say, you can have more in a calendar year, but to define how many actual vendors you can have and that might be a good, good way to kinda avoid unintended consequence maybe.
Have so many on one piece of-
Yeah, so like, temporary sales shall include, you know, X number of vendors per-
How many times, maybe you Taylor know this, how many times would this have come up?
It hasn't come up since I've been here.
Okay, are we, what I, I have this terminology I use in work, right? Pole vaulting over rep?
Over architecting.
Yeah, are we going down a rabbit hole with this where we don't really have risk for the town? I agree that take out the 501(c)(3) requirement, but I think my recommendation would be leave as is if we don't have risk and the, and the planning department is not currently being faced with a ton of issues, concerns, requests about this.
Well, I would go the other way. If there's no risk, then I would open it up a little bit. If you feel like there's risk, keeping it tight like it is now helps prevent the risk. I also think this is so narrow that probably people are like, I don't even, I mean, like, if you open it up, somebody could actually see benefit to having land and using it. Whereas it's so restrictive now, it's almost not worth the fight to go figure out, okay, who can I find for different things that only want two days? So that, but, but what we could always do to balance, maybe it's not 30, maybe it's 20. See if it is a problem, we can always expand it to 20. I don't think that's gonna be any kind of down zoning. So we can always loosen the belt a little bit, but I would allow four days for their event and I would allow maybe 20. I'm okay with 30, but, cuz that's 120 days.
So how many people own vacant lots in CB and CLD that would want to do this? Do we know that?
I do not.
Right, we don't know that.
I could touch base with-
So we don't know if there's a missed opportunity currently cuz we don't, we don't know who this might affect, right? Necessarily, cuz you can only do it in CB and CLD. You can't do it here on the island.
But why are we being overly restrictive on it? For the risk that somebody might set up a-
I don't think we are. I think what I'm trying to say is because the planning team is saying it's not a problem that comes to them haven't at all, that we don't need to change something that the town is not facing as a problem, is all I'm saying.
Well, I'm not worrying about the town, I'm worrying about the person who owns the land. I mean, I feel like, are we being overly restrictive on someone and giving them the ability to use their land?
What would tell us that is that people were coming to the planning department and requesting this and they could not comply with the current ordinance, which you say is not happening, right?
But I'm saying, no, 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 but I'm saying if it's overly restrictive, yes, somebody's not gonna try and jump through. I, I, look, I think we're, I would just raise the number of events to something reasonable. I would raise it to four days, not two, and then I would take out the thing. And then let's see if it is a problem. If it is, becomes a problem, you know, I mean, we're talking about 80 days if somebody-
Cuz I don't agree.
Since there's a heated debate, so I would ask for maybe a vote or a consensus.
Let's get a consensus. I don't own any land that falls under this qualification, so I'm not-
The thing is, we don't know the number of lots. We don't think there's, there's no issue now.
And my, my concern is that it's, to our knowledge, is not a problem. And if we go changing this, we could be having problems with traffic, with parking, with all these noise for, so-
We just did, but we did the same thing with the dodo-orient business. Look at all the problems that can happen. There could be prostitution in the parking lot. I mean, we can always concoct all the problems that can happen by making any one of these changes. Then maybe it's 10 events per year or something like that. And again, if it's still not, never a problem, then we're only talking about the effort right now is changing words. That's all we're doing. But look, I'm one person, you guys know how I feel, so.
Let's table this and come back to it at a later date.
Okay.
And give everybody a chance to-
I don't see any benefit to doing that, Mr. Chairman. I think that, I think that I'm hearing from the town what the reality is. I totally respect Mr. Gilbert's opinion. I see where he's going. I just don't see that we're addressing, we're addressing a problem that doesn't exist.
Yeah.
And opening up the potential for creating other problems is my concern. So I would say that we close this by, with a vote, whether to change it or not.
Well, there's no motion on the table to change it.
There's no motion to change it.
So if we're fine with this, then stay with it.
Just leave it as is.
Do you need a motion, Matt?
No.
Can I at least have some nodding heads maybe, or like acknowledgement of a consensus of the board?
Consensus of the board, raise number of events.
Just go down the road.
The number of days and then take out the nonprofit.
No.
Nope.
No.
All right.
Leave it as is. Wind farms is a non-issue because we don't really have a-
The next couple of items, wind farms, and then I believe right after that is wireless communications facilities are two of the more in-depth items that we, we said we would hang tight on for a bit before diving into those.
And the solar as well, I mean, the wireless comm as well.
Correct, all of that.
So that would take us to page 41. 7.55, golf cart and low-speed vehicle sales and rentals.
Okay.
Okay. Get through this today.
Almost there. We're almost there. In fact, this is the last one.
Yes, it is. Golf carts, the only notes I see are fencing walls, rear side of building storage, not street front. So right now, I know we have, any business has regulations on fencing from neighboring, I'm at Tesco, would we wanna put opaque fence as a definition or?
Yeah, I think that's, that's totally reasonable. That's one of the issues we run into with, with golf cart sales and rentals, certainly.
Add opaque fencing.
So we've got two businesses that I can think of. One is the, is it the Ocean Outfitters or Strands? And then the other one is beside Dollar General. Right now, the one at Dollar General, I don't believe it has any fencing or anything, and I do think it keeps its golf carts sort of in the front.
Right.
So if we change this, are we down zoning now since they've already established those rules?
That's a good point. Yes, sir. I had that thought in my head when I made that comment. Yeah, since we do have a couple of these on the island, we'd need to check to make sure whatever changes we put in is consistent with the established business practices.
That are currently in place.
But that's something I'll, I'll take a look at those uses and see if there's anything that we can codify that would help us out in that regard.
Matt, as part of that, I mean, I'm, I'm a little confused as to what really their practices are. Even the one that has the fencing, there are times when it's all behind the fencing. There's times when it's out front. It doesn't seem like there's anything they're consistent with. The one by Dollar General does have fenced area in the back and a lot of times, every cart is behind the fence when they're closed, but then there's times there are carts out front.
Yeah.
So.
And I'll, that's another thing that I'll reach out to our Economic Development Director and check with her to see what their practices are. Maybe, you know, the amount of actual stock or inventory they have at any given time. You know, the management of that might be affecting where the golf carts are placed. I can definitely do some research into what our local businesses are doing and see if there's anything we can craft that assists us, but also avoids a down zoning problem with the, with the state statute. I'm happy to do that.
And to be clear, if, if it is that they are parked out front now and we want them behind a fence, there's nothing we can do as far as, from this point on? Any new one has to have it or?
No, not without, not without dealing with the down zoning provisions, yes, sir. That's, we've been placed into a little bit of a tricky scenario dealing with that, that statute. I was gonna save this for staff reports, but there, there's a couple of efforts in the legislature to tweak those rules and to give towns back some flexibility, but it's all a little bit up in the air right now. So we're keeping a close eye on it and our fingers are crossed we'll get some, get some local authority back in that regard. But yeah, if it, if it's a situation where that, that's, that was permitted previously and we changed the rule to where it would no longer be permitted or it's gotta be done in a different way that puts them in a non-conforming category commercially, it would be struck if it was challenged, yeah.
But is there a difference in how these entities operate in that the storage of their units is one thing, but the marketing of them by putting their units out front, which is what they do during the day at this particular establishment? It seems to me that that's okay, right? Cuz that's marketing their product and they don't leave them out there overnight. So is there a way to say, storage is one thing, marketing of your product is, can be short-term, certain hours of the day?
Strands does that. I think the other one beside, I don't, I think it keeps it all in that front.
He's got storage in the back.
He's got storage.
But I mean, no, but I think he just, the front is like a parking lot for his, it is advertising.
Maybe in-season, but Strands is the same way. They've got so many of them that they're out front at night. But off-season for sure, I mean, his front lot will be completely empty. It's nothing but blacktop.
Yeah.
So that's what I'm saying, is what we could do here, is it, would it be an issue to say, you, you can, you have to store them a certain way, you can market during business hours?
Yeah.
That's all I'm saying, I'm just throwing out an idea to help with these kind of establishments.
Yeah, and that's, that's what I wanna look into, the, the business practices and like, are they actually storing them out there? You know, is it, is it just out there for marketing, you know, and that? And then we can maybe craft something around what they're actually doing.
Yeah.
And avoid, you know, a non-conformity issue. I'll just look into some of their business practices a little bit and see what they're, what they're doing on site.
Risk leading the witness. The fear is you go to these and you ask them what they do and they tell you, oh yeah, we keep them out there, you know, whatever.
Right.
And then now we're locked, we can't do anything. So they detect that something's afoot and they tell you that they keep them out there all the time. In the other extreme, could we say, hey, look, we're thinking about doing this? You know, where, you know, and then see, would that fit with what you're doing? And if they say, yes, that fits with what we're doing, then great. We know that we could move forward because it is congruent or, you know, to what their, their business practice is. I feel like if you ask them, what, what do you want? Or what, you know, they might, they might overstate. Cuz my perspective would be during the summer, when you have more of your inventory being rented, you don't have this, you have plenty of space in the back for off, you know, after-hour storage. During the off-season, when no one's here renting, you might have so many to accommodate, you know, your summer demand that you can't fit them all in the back, that you do use the front as advertisement, but really it's just storage. So I'm afraid if we lead them there, they might hand, but if you're gonna reach out to them, I'll let you guys figure out how to ask them so that we can come back and actually do something that wouldn't be in violation. You know what I mean?
Yes, sir.
All right.
And Matt, on 7.55.2, to me that, you heard it, that it's only-
Right, yes, sir.
I mean, sure you can, but-
This isn't a restriction, right? This is a, this is a allowance versus a restriction, yes, sir.
So say add are only permissible inside? Is that your suggestion, Mark? Okay.
7.55.2, it's on 41, the bottom of 41. And do we think that they're doing that now? Or if they've got a fenced-in area, they're just doing it inside the fenced-in area and nobody can see?
I know the Pete's, I know he actually has a enclosed building with a shop where he works on his. I've never seen work taking place.
Strands?
It's Strands.
Okay, 7.58, condo mixed use.
Made it, guys. I said, we made it, guys.
We made it. Notes on this one. Density, retail service, reference 7, uh, you, town, you know, reference 7.56, not 7.58 and doesn't mention condominiums here or residential. Only mixed use and is not specifically defined as a use.
Yeah, so I'll provide a little bit of context to this too. Staff would recommend that we strike the condominium provision out of this. Zoning doesn't typically, so condominium is an ownership style of property. Zoning doesn't typically concern itself with the ownership structure of a development. We're more looking at the form, the type, the use of the development. And actually, in, in previous efforts to revise this ordinance, the condominium part was, was actually struck out and it was just related to just how do we wanna see mixed-use development happen? So it's a little bit of a remnant, it should've been struck in a previous one to just classify this as, how do we want mixed use, a true mixed-use development to build on the ground? So I would recommend we go ahead and strike the condominium portion out of there just, and to make it consistent with our table and our other definitions as well.
And then everything else will fall under the commercial district anyhow.
Yeah, so this is, this is listed as a special, is permitted as a special use in the CLD. Town Council actually just recently permitted one on 211. The Stark Enterprises property, which is right behind Lowe's Foods, this is the classification that they came in under because our table doesn't classify it as needing to be a condominium. And they did meet all these supplemental regulations as well. Some, some areas for, this is one that from a, you know, planning regulation standpoint, we could probably include, you know, if the board consensus is to do so, include some, some upgraded like pedestrian walkability connectivity requirements, things like that, just to make sure that we've got a cohesive, you know, good mixed-use development when one does come in in order to, you know, make sure that we're, we're meeting our goals there. So this is one that if the board wants us to kinda take a planning deep dive on and make some recommendations as far as what constitutes a good mixed-use product going forward, we're happy to tackle that for you.
So Matt, isn't there maybe some discussion around mixed use in CB here on the island?
Yeah, that's going through the Comprehensive Land Use Plan right now. There's been some discussion about what that might look like, how we might do it going forward. I do think that that's, could potentially be a separate conversation from this because you might have, you could have multiple types of mixed use, right? You could have a downtown-style mixed use, which is probably what might fit the vision for, you know, the, the island portion of commercial versus what we saw with Stark Enterprises, which is more of a suburban mixed use where you've got, it's more horizontal, you know, you've got a residential component and a commercial component. They're all in the same parcel, they're all, you know, done under one development, but it's integrated in a horizontal way instead of in a vertical way. But definitely something to keep in mind going forward.
Should we table this until some direction from the final land use plan and that downtown planning that they're working on?
All of that's gonna have to go into this anyhow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and also if we take out the condominium and we just say, in no case shall the number of non-residential units exceed the number of residential units. I think that is something we would wanna research as to whether that's still applicable. And then just making sure if it's just true mixed use- And then just making sure if it's just true mixed-use. The thing with condominium being in there versus mixed-use, I think of mixed-use as being, you know, like, somebody's going to build a, a building and it's got five different units for rent or for. Condominium means that all five of those could be owned differently. And maybe that's still a nuance that we don't care about. So if we take condominium out, just making sure whatever we were putting in there to cover this notion that each individual unit is individually owned, do we capture what was intended, you know, by having condominium in there? You know what I mean?
I think this is an old term. Everybody used to think of condos, mixed-use. It's not the current modern term. So taking condo out and putting just mixed-use is what we want.
That's what the previous adjustments.
I'm not saying we're not. I'm just saying the notion that a condominium, everything is individually owned, let's not lose whatever we were trying to capture in that when we take out condominium and rewrite it. That's all I was trying to say. I'm not trying to say it's relevant. It's just a different animal than if it's one building with the same landlord and everyone is renting from that landlord. That's all I'm saying.
So it sounds like there's consensus to remove condominium from 7.58, correct? Okay.
Do we still need 7.58.5?
I think we, I think that's what should be tabled for the streetscape in the land use plan finalized.
So wait, so then the mixed-use, the mixed-use that we're trying to encourage, does mixed-use by definition mean it includes residential? Is that what mixed-use means? No, it doesn't. So, because I thought we were wanting more commercial.
We are.
We are.
But this says you can't have more non-residential than residential. So I'm just trying to figure this one. It, it, you know what? It's okay. You'll figure it out.
Well, I think the balance is still, we need housing on the island. So to, to even limit the number of residential options.
But if it was an 80/20 rule that they're trying to put where we have, you know, 20% commercial, 80% residential.
Not arguing that point at all. I'm just saying I think there's, again, a balance issue, right? We definitely want more commercial, but we got to somehow maintain more residential options, too. So we, we just have to figure out to Mr. Gilbert's point, what is the right ratio there? And I think once the land use plan and the streetscape for the commercial district is more final, right, Matt? That'll give us some direction on what this needs to look like.
Yeah.
Right?
That's correct.
Okay.
If I could ask a question. The, with the one that came before us starts, you know, one of the things I'd express, I think a couple of people maybe did, but was about the parking because of the way their setup was, it was pretty much your driveway. Was that they, they had a few overflow spots. And then when they brought it back before council, they had listened to us and they added a few additional spots, which I was glad to see. Still didn't think it was sufficient. Is there anything that we can do for a mixed-use to guarantee that we have more parking? Or are our hands tied there?
Well, just, just for clarification, the, the one you're talking about is not Stark. The one you're talking about is Waterside, which was the town home only development. The, the Waterside one was a special use permit that council ended up approving. You know, if the, the board wants to review minimum parking requirements, that's something that we actually have included on our list of things to do in the CB zoning district because it relates to the streetscape. And the, the plan of attack there is to, once the comprehensive plan is done and the streetscape plan is adopted, that'll give us some direction on how to handle some of those parking issues we're running into. So it is on our, I guess, that is all to say, it is on our docket of, of things to do pending, you know, land use plan completion.
So again, I totally agree with Mr. Gilbert in that this section needs to be revisited and revised, made, I would say, modernized even, right?
Modernized is a good word for it, yes, ma'am.
For this, right? Because I think certainly there is opportunity to do that for good reasons.
Okay. No new business, board member reports. Start on this side of the table. Mark? Carrie? You've got something on that.
Yeah, I just had some notes follow up. I, I requested to Matt and copy the chair that I think it would be a really good thing, and I don't know who the participant should be, but I know that as we try to develop the commercial district and we try to work with our businesses, that we start to understand what are the any concerns that the commercial businesses, our existing businesses have with respect to the zoning in the commercial districts. I think it'd be good if we had kind of a joint meeting or a leaders' meeting of the Business Advisory Board and Planning Board. Let's just kind of solicit for what, what do we all need to be working on for the betterment of the community? And so Matt, I don't know how you feel about that, but I think there are some things that are bubbling up, right? Along with the land use plan that there are things we can do to help our businesses be more successful. And where there are things in the, the table of uses and the UDO that they have concerns about, I'd like to hear specifics. So that's the reason I asked that question.
Yeah, and thank you for asking that. Staff's already been working on that in the background, just kind of concurrent with the, with the UDO. As far as what are, what if any are their UDO problems, you know, as far as business operation goes? Or, you know, as we think about, you know, how do we redevelop or develop our commercial areas? You know, what are their impediments? We've been working really closely with Hallie on that. And she's actually preparing something for council for next month. So when I got your email, I thought, since we're already preparing something, maybe she can come next month and cover some of that same material with you. And then she can come in prepared with, you know, kind of what she's already working on. And then you have a, a clear view, or maybe a clearer view about how you want to work going forward. But yes, ma'am, we're already working on that for council. So we'll be happy to, you know, include Planning Board in that as well at our next month's meeting.
Yeah, I think we had a meeting of the chairs of all the different committees, advisory boards or whatever. And that was one of the things that came up was more, what would be helpful to make the boards more successful and more effective is to have more collaboration between the various boards on what are they working on? What are their priorities? What are their concerns? So that we don't conflict with the actions and the recommendations that we make to town council.
Good point.
So that was the reason for that. And then just by way of FYI, the, Matt, I had a note, and you probably know that this is true. The final draft of the comprehensive land use plan update is supposed to be updated, uploaded today on the town website. Maybe you're going to talk about that? I'll let you, I'll let you run with that. And then, so Hallie will come in July to bring us maybe some economic development plans and thoughts, which will be really good for, I think, us to hear as well.
Yes, ma'am.
So thank you for that.
Absolutely.
That's all I had.
Staff reports.
Yeah, as Carrie just mentioned, the 90% draft land use plan is supposed to be uploaded today. Definitely going to check in on that effort right after this. But it, it is open for public comment for 30 days. So everyone, check out the draft. Anybody watching at home, tell your friends, go check it out. Because it, you know, it's, it's not done until council's adopted it. So, you know, anything that's in there that you have a question or a comment about, definitely send it in so our consultants can have a look at it and see if, see if there's any adjustments or anything that we might have missed or overlooked or anything like that. Definitely, we want, still want to hear people's input. It's very valuable. And even when it comes to Planning Board, you'll have a chance to review it and make a recommendation to Town Council. Town Council holds a public hearing on it prior to adoption. So there, there's plenty of opportunity left out there for folks to take a look at it, give us your feedback, you know, get your voices out there. So we did have our last, last open house associated with it. Is it last week? I'm sorry, I've lost a bunch of time over the last couple of weeks. But it, it was pretty successful. We had, had a good group of folks come out and got a lot of good feedback on, on what the consultants had prepared so far. The town bicycle plan is currently, has an open survey for comments. So check that out. It's going to run until the end of the month. I had a call with the consultant on that last week and we already had over 200 respondents only a few days into opening it up. So it's looking pretty good there, too. That's really good feedback. I've worked in much bigger jurisdictions, they got way less public engagement than we've gotten here. So that's, that's really positive. That's, that's great. Anybody?
That relates to the plan, land use plan. Is that something that we could ask the town, since we're going to be reviewing it? And I know it's not a final document, that we could get printed for us? Or is, is that, we should be on our own for that?
I can check and see if it's in a printable version online. It should be, but I'll, I'll check and see if it is.
Thank you.
I'll be happy to print out some copies.
I would think so.
I think, yeah. I'll check and see.
That's fine, yeah. I'll print it out, yeah.
Be happy to provide you guys with whatever you need.
It's actually pretty concise. It's not that many pages this time.
Oh, really? Because the last one was a good document.
It was a book.
Yeah, yeah, it was.
Yeah, I think it's a little different this time, right?
Yeah, they did a great job consolidating. That was some of the feedback we had gotten from town council was we want a more actionable, easy-to-use document.
Sorry to ask.
Matt, isn't the, isn't the plan to council like September to finalize? Is that kind of the timeline?
That's the plan timeline as of right now. So you guys will be taking a look at it in August for your recommendation. And then the public hearing would be in September, assuming everything, you know, we, we've obviously made some time in there in case of emergency or something like that. So, but it's been smooth sailing so far. So fingers crossed it'll, it'll keep going that way. I was going to think, I thought, we mentioned Hallie coming next month. Oh, the last council meeting, council did vote to ask the Planning Board to look at temporary sign allowances in the right-of-way. So just want to give you guys a heads up that that'll be on your next month's agenda for discussion. Taylor will be leading that effort up. But just to.
I'm sorry, don't we already have ordinances around that?
We do.
What are we doing exactly?
The town council voted to look at easing the restrictions on temporary signage in the right-of-way. I won't speak for council. Definitely go check the, the video and, and check that particular item. But it was, the, the discussion mainly centered around the current restrictions potentially being too restrictive and wanting to ease some of those regulations that we have related to temporary signage in the right-of-way. But like I said, we'll, we'll have an agenda item for you next month on that one. Definitely, if, if in the interim you have thoughts or questions, you know, you can always send them to me and I'll be happy to look at them or chat with you about it prior to the meeting. But that's all I had for you guys today.
Thank you.
For everything. Thank y'all for all your hard work, that tremendous effort to get through these supplemental regulations.
Where do things stand on us getting something back on the road standard?
Oh, yes, thank you. Thank you for the reminder. I was supposed to give you guys a report on that. So staff took the last couple of months to review the technical standards that we had sent in the DOT and make some edits to it. Concurrently, the Stormwater Administration Division of Development Services has been working on getting some contracted assistance to develop a stormwater design manual. And we've got somebody under contract to do that. In our first few, few meetings and discussions with them, it seemed like it would make sense to, to add that to their list of things to do because essentially we want that all to be one consolidated technical standards. You know, include all the stormwater design stuff, all the streets design stuff into one manual. So what we've asked them to do is include that document review into their creation of the stormwater design manual. So that will delay getting it to you guys a little bit, but we'll get some, some really good technical engineering eyeballs on that document, too. Just to add one more layer to make sure that it's, you know, a, a great document that hits everything that we're looking for and gets, sets us up for success in the future. So I do apologize and thank you for reminding me to give you all that update. But we do want to get this one right for sure. So I think having a, a technical engineering review on that from a third-party consultant will really help us have a good product in the end on that.
We had said we didn't want to rush it. If they needed more time, they should take it. So that's good news.
Thank you.
Very good. One final thing before we adjourn. I need to have a motion to excuse Gene and David today for personal reasons.
So moved.
All in favor? Thank you. Now can I have a motion to?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Adjourn.